Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to start this special board meeting with four members present and one will be joining us shortly. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order if we could have a motion to adopt the agenda of one item. Second, okay. Please vote on approving the one item agenda. No, it's not too controversial. Okay, yes, we're on a roll. Okay, we are having this special meeting to discuss the ongoing development of the neighborhood schools program. We will have a presentation by the superintendent and some staff members. Then we will hear from some members of the public who have asked to speak on this item, and then we will have board discussion. So let's start off with the superintendent. There could be a lot of questions. I think it would be, in terms of clarifying questions, let's do the clarifying questions before the public comment, but discussion afterwards. We'll try to separate that out the best we can.
Thank you, President Evans. Melissa, if you could call up the presentation. What I'd like to do here is, in collaboration with a number of the senior staff, is discuss where we are with the strategic process. This is a plan that the board authorized myself and the staff to build. It's a five-year vision of how we would go from where we are from last March of 2011 to where we would be sometime in 2016 in the pursuit of creating a quality school in every neighborhood. And to this point in time, what has been happening is the conceptual or the philosophical framework of what does a quality school look like. And I'll touch on that very briefly. We've had a couple of public board workshops where we've updated the trustees, how we were doing in creating that structure. But in order to reach that structure of consistent quality schools throughout the district, you've got to move from the strategy to the tactics. And so if you look at the title of this PowerPoint presentation, it is Tactical Next Steps. We are running down a dual path right now, ever refining our conceptual framework and at the same time identifying the various actions that will create a setting where there is a quality neighborhood school. It just does not happen overnight. It won't happen in the entire district at the same time because our campuses stand alone in terms of their environment, where they're located, what their student population may be. While there are certainly consistencies, there are enough differences between them that we've got to bring this together in a synchronized fashion. So tomorrow, as a point of information for the trustees and for the community, we are meeting with the principals to talk about this whole concept of a quality neighborhood school. We have been incrementally over the last few months refining the process with different people involved. We are now going to take the concept out to the public, starting with the principals who will work it down through their staff, then working across cluster meetings. So that's one whole area that the board has seen some information as we've been evolving it. But now we have to really open up that parallel path to talk about how do you get there? What are the actions you're going to take? So what we plan to do tonight is, in a paced fashion, move our discussion through about 35 slides. If I could, go to the next slide, please. First, set the table for those either in the auditorium or listening in on what is the five-year journey all about. Then define two general groupings of schools. We have our traditional, broad-based schools that are operating without a specific theme, and then we have another collection of schools that we call specialty schools. Now, that's a definition, it covers a lot of ground, and Sid and Nellie will discuss that. Once we've set the table for what the process is and what are the kind of schools we're looking at, there are any number of dimensions to the tactics involved. What are the costs? What are the financial implications? What are the legal steps that have to be considered? We have current policies and programs dealing with choice and how we pick and choose where kids go and how we support programs. We're moving in a different direction to this quality neighborhood, which requires cultural change and mindset adjustment. There are also concerns about facilities. What's the capacity to move kids to and from and retain that quality neighborhood school? And along with capacity come other functions, like moving, what is our system for transportation? And then we've had an ongoing, over the past year, a group of senior folks, both educators and business leaders, who have been trying to look at the interdependencies. So this is the beginning of the conversation. A whole lot more that has to go into the tactics. While I will lead off at different parts, we're going to have the deputy for academics, Nellie Meyer, speak. The assistant soup for instructional support, Sid Salazar. We'll have financial discussion with Amy Shackelford, representing the CFO. Some business operations oversight from Phil Stover. Before we get there, what I want to leave the board and the community with are the kind of actions we're considering, because we're going to come back around for an open-ended discussion. We're telling you where we are, where we want to go, some of the actions. For example, the choice program we have in the district, which has directed students and parents to various tailored need, has to be considered in a new vein. We need to consider when we identify choices, how we deal in the whole area of portables, you know? How do we count them for capacity? We won't have the opportunity or the resources to move them around without connecting them to the strategy. Prior to pursuing choice applications, do we in fact ask, and I'm recommending that we ask, parents and students to consider your neighborhood school? You know, there's a whole consideration for protocols we want to develop, surveys we want to consider. These are actions that will be warranted to examine after we leave today's discussion. The whole idea of a choice office, you know, considering it under a different framework. It's a neighborhood choice and support office, considering the neighborhood school as a first consideration, but then supporting other issues. We have to consider the movement, the patterns of students in this district. It's been said widely that well over 50,000 students do not go to their neighborhood school. And we've already begun a survey process to appreciate why they go where they go. But as we alter the demographics or the patterns, we have to be ever sensitive to the race-human relations aspects of what we do in this district, because a good amount of the history for our programs today deal with integration conversation of the 1970s, as was valid back then is valid today. We have to mitigate racially isolated schools and come up with the appropriate policies and action plans, looking at our different schools. Now I'm moving into the specialty area. How do we support them in terms of funding in a downed fiscal environment? What do we do and how do we sustain them independent of a special flow of money? One of the financial implications and an area we need to look at. That's linked affordability and sustainability to transportation. Over the next four years, we will be making additional adjustments to our transportation system, and we have been at this for the last three and a half years, based on what made sense, what was affordable, what were some of the desired outcomes. There will be more adjustment made to transportation. Facilities, while we are not building new schools per se right now, we are updating and renovating and Prop S and trying to optimally provide good facilities across the district. And there'll be more to be considered as we impact the movement of children and parents. There'll be both projected and unintended consequences, and we're going to have to be nimble enough to make adjustments to facilities. And this will bring us back to that consolidation committee. We'll have to be ever vigilant. And so I've got a list of the recommendations, and I want to thank the board president for the conversation he and I have had over the last several weeks and for consultation he's had with board members. But I think that I'll hand out a specific list at the end, but I've kind of highlighted where we are with the things we need to do and then some. If I could, move on to the next slide. And I'm going to quickly now take us through, our strategic process is one where we want to have a good right balance between specialty schools and our traditional non-thematic schools. So what you see here is all the different things that have to be balanced when you think about attributes. We certainly want to have each campus stand on its own. We clearly want to have a curriculum that's properly designed, and that we want it to be responsive. That's what's key to balancing. If we could, go to the next slide. A quality school should be built on certain traits or attributes, and we have worked very, very carefully over many months now to build, and it is, I want to emphasize, a work in progress, what would be the indicators for a quality school. This is where we are at a point in time. Today, we have 12 different components. You could consider this a checklist on one level for why and how you would gauge whether a school is in fact delivering a quality academic experience. So if we're going to create a quality school, here is a framework we want to consider. How do you apply, it's through a five-year plan that's built on certain tactics. Next slide, please. So, having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Salazar and Dr. Meyer and have them discuss what in fact are the school groupings that we're talking about and now how we need to focus on them.
Thank you, Superintendent Koba. As part of our community-based reform, we have as one of the singular points of interest the quality school in every neighborhood. And so in order to look and see what qualities and what indicators might exist, you saw the 12 items that include such things as quality leadership and broad curriculum. At this point in the presentation, we're going to move forward to look at how do you actually define what the quality school is and what offerings do we have within the neighborhood and what offerings do we currently have that are spread out across the district that we want to look to make available for all students? So as we move forward, you can see that one of the ideas of what a quality school should have includes the idea of a neighborhood school cluster. And the emphasis here is that the school is really the center of the community, and it's a place where students and parents can come for information and support. It also helps them be a part of the community to support the students with community services as well as resources and intellectual capital. Another section, the community-based model, really helps students in participating in a K-12 cluster. And the idea if they're in, stay within their neighborhood, they're supported, their family has also been within that K-12 cluster, teachers they've had, that have had other siblings become familiar with the family, and therefore the learning curve is shortened and there's more support for the particular student. So in that respect, it fosters family-friendly, safe environments where parents and students feel very comfortable within that community. And the idea too that in these cases, you can walk to the school that is something that you're familiar with and comfortable with. So it's usually within walking distance for the ease of accessibility. In addition to this concept of a quality school within the neighborhood, is also the concept that we have specialty schools, schools that emphasize themes and work on specific specialties that tap into the talent of the students. So I would like to introduce Dr. Sid Salazar, who will share the specific types of specialty schools currently in existence within our district. Dr. Salazar?
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. On this slide, you will see that there are three types of specialty schools: international, baccalaureate, or more commonly known as IB, magnet, and atypical. There is a crossover with magnet schools in both the IB and atypical schools, as you can see. Altogether, there are 32 magnet schools, 13 elementary, three middle schools, 11 high school, including or also five atypical schools, which are K-6 or K-8 immersion programs. In addition to that, we have the K-12 John Muir program and the 6-12 SEPA fine arts program. Next slide, please. As we are looking at our magnet characteristics, I want to highlight that since the court order, magnet schools have been considered the cornerstone of the district's integration plan, as our superintendent alluded to earlier. Attachment nine in your booklets or in your attachments shows the diversity of all the specialty schools. It is an aspirational goal because at no time is race considered in the student's application to enroll. The dedicated magnets demonstrate the ability of schools to mirror the district's demographics. Next slide. To highlight the IB program, an IB team made up of parents, principals, and district staff is meeting weekly to seek financial support and educational grants to assist in supporting this outstanding educational approach. Next slide. In terms of atypical specialty schools, these programs are non-traditional, but a very important part of the district's options for students, allowing flexibility for families who wish these alternatives to a neighborhood school education. These atypical schools are by application rather than by placement. This particular slide highlights those schools that are making a difference within our district. So you can see on the side note there that's highlighted, specialty schools make up 18% of the district's API, 800-plus schools. That's when you compare the magnet schools to the entire school population within our district. However, when you compare magnet schools to magnet schools, 15 of the district's 32 magnets have a 2010, 2011 API score of the 800-plus, which translates to 44.8% of all magnet schools. In addition to that, all three language immersion schools and language enrichment studies are on this list. Next slide. The focus of this particular grant was highlighted in particular for Roosevelt Middle School and Mission Bay High School. The magnet school assistance program is a highly competitive federal grant, of which, as you can see, the district has been granted in different grant cycles. Next competition, our current grant sunsets in 2013, and that application would be due to the federal government in January of 2013. Currently, $100 million in magnet school grants to 36 school districts in 15 states. The award is to help school districts increase public school choices for parents through innovative approaches to learning and helps districts attract a diverse group of students from throughout their communities. Next, I will introduce Amy Shackelford, who will be talking about the financial implications.
As you will note on the next slide, what we've done is we've broken down the four types of schools to be an average cost per pupil. This, the amounts that reflected on this sheet reflect all general funds, so it'll be your unrestricted and your restricted. We included all those specialized funds that you receive, the English learners, the special ed, the Title I, in addition to all of your X Factor, your teacher, your per-pupil allocations. And so those, the data reflected here is based on the original tentative enrollment and the adopted budget. The next slide reflects just a very high-level view of where the funding categories break down within those dollars. There's $116 million for GFU-based allocation. That would include, again, your teachers, your principals, visiting teachers, prep time, any athletic allocations. The transportation is the $3.9 million. Restricted resources and grants, that includes the MSEP grants, again, the Title I, any EIA funding that may be allocated to those schools. Tier three, there's about $260,000 remaining in the budget. As you may recall, one of the budget solutions for 1112 was to reduce the tier-three allocations that were going to the magnet schools, and that was about $3 million. And then the other pieces, the custodial is about $5 million, and other, which are some miscellaneous categories, is about $1 million, for a total of $167 million that are allocated for those specialty schools.
Amy, can you go back one slide? And I think the board and the community would like to perhaps better appreciate, before we move on into the legal implications, magnet school per-pupil funding at $6,000. That, I think, would surprise some folks, and I think it's worth stopping for one to talk about that as compared to the other per-pupil allocation.
Correct. So if we were to look at it from just a general fund unrestricted allocation, which we call the base allocation, which is the principals and the teachers and the X Factor, the magnet schools are about $4,500, and general ed, sorry, $4,254. And general ed is about $4,211. So there's only about a $40 difference between the specialty schools and the non-specialty schools. That dollar amount is based primarily on, if you remember how the X Factor is calculated, it's based on enrollment bands, and so there's a weighted factor. So if the magnet schools have a lot more smaller schools than the non-specialty, that's why the average is slightly different. As far as any additional over, general fund unrestricted dollars that were allocated to the magnet schools this year, they did receive eight over-formula teachers based on third Friday enrollment. When schools were having issues about making their master schedules work or if they have combination classes, they, we had set aside in the budget 15 over-formula teachers. Eight of those went to those specialty schools. In addition, when we did the IB restoration, right after we adopted, did the unaudited actuels, there was an additional eight positions that went towards those programs. So overall, there's about $1.4 million between the over-formula teachers and the restoration of those IB positions. But other than that, the allocations from an unrestricted perspective were about the same. And then addition, there is the $3.9 million of busing that they get, but that's outside of the classroom allocations.
So the, when-
We'll go through presentations, then we'll have clarifying questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you said clarifying questions before public comment and then afterwards comments. Okay.
Right, but when we finish the presentation, we'll do that before we go to the public. Okay.
Larry, I think over to you.
As the slide in front of you represents, points out the certain legal implications in this process. As we all know, the district has been under, for lack of a better term, a reduction of discrimination process since the mid-'70s, and that's what's called the Carlin case. We'll go to the next slide, which has, sets this out. Basically, that was a case that was filed, like I said, in the '70s, that the end result was a consent decree or kind of like a settlement agreement between the district and the Carlin group, which was a number of folks from the community to develop a plan to reduce segregation in the district. Very common, actually December, I say December, I guess I went back farther than that. But there was a writ in 1977 that was issued by the court that indicated that the district should be providing some efforts to integrate the schoolchildren amongst, in the various parts of the district. Since that time, there's been a long history within this district to create a system that is, as Dr. Salazar pointed out, is, for lack of a better term, race-neutral as possible. In other words, the theory was to give the parents the choice to put their children in a school they felt was more appropriate for their particular student. And in the beginning, and to this day, to somewhat less of a degree, there's quite a bit of, of a number of schools, and the number I saw was 57,000 students in our district of the 114,000 students that we have, do not attend their neighborhood school, their resident school. That is very significant. It's obviously something that the district worked very hard to do because it has been very successful at doing it. And in the meantime, over the last 20, 25, well, boy, I'm getting old, it's more than 30 years since the writ in 1977. In the '90s, a number of folks went to court and basically got the court to rule that the district had done what it was supposed to do in a good faith effort to provide the integration in the district, and the court supervision ended in 1998. So we are not currently under any court supervision concerning our desegregation or integration program. And in fact, when the court issued its ruling and indicated that the district should be afforded some flexibility, as noted in the slide, for budget legislation or effectiveness of program, in the intervening year since 1998, there's been a number of changes, a number of different things have happened. And it is, I think the court made the comment even in 1997, when the court made the ruling with, that the district had done some, I forget, I remember the term that he used, was almost stunning to the point how far the district had come from the '60s to the '90s in order to integrate students. At that point, there was a discussion on the issue of the Proposition 209, which it had passed right about that same time. So the court declined to reach that issue. The court ruled that the supervision of the district would end in January 1st of 1998. It did end. It indicated that if there are any issues, that further litigation would have to be implemented. In the background of that, while that was happening, in the background, a number of things were passed in the '90s, which is reflected in the bottom part of that slide relating to school choice, program improvement, and open enrollment. That was over the series of cases over from the '90s to the current time, a number of items, basically focusing on, and we now have statutory direction both in state and federal law, that we provide flexibility for parents to enroll their children within the district, what they call intra-district, as opposed to inter-district, from outside the district enrollment. So we have some legal obligations in that regard. The way I read the statutes and the way I have, when I reviewed the Carlin case, the board has given great flexibility to carry this out, however, there needs to be some provision that the board provides for parents to choose where their children can attend school. So it's, we have to navigate this particular area. I won't say very carefully, I'd just say carefully in that we have to have a program that's left giving the parents some choice. But certainly, if the district, as I read the case law concerning integration, desegregation, if the district is offering or providing schools that are, I don't want to use the word equivalent, the more, you know, comparable, I guess is the best word for schools, if a child was attending a neighborhood school and a comparable school was available to him in the neighborhood versus having to travel across the district, that I think that's an appropriate goal that the court would support if in fact someone challenged the process. So, other than comments from the audience, I think the rest of the conversation, if you wanted to ask particular questions, probably should take place in closed session. So I just want to leave the slide with you and just basically keep that in mind when we're going through this process. I think one thing to remember, if we all, if we go back to Brown versus Board of Education, the problem was equality of facilities and equality of program. And that's always the key, and that's always the goal, and I think in any district.
I think back over to Dr. Salazar, who take that now and talk about the choice program and where we are and where we are going with that.
In the next several slides, we're going to, I'm going to be presenting to you some information in regards to our choice program, in particular our enrollment options, how we've been providing continuity to students between elementary, middle, and high school, presenting information, a little bit of information, high-level information about our all schools fair, and then a parent survey that we had conducted, I believe, on- fair, and then a parent survey that we had conducted, I believe, on behalf or request of the school board. Next slide. Oh, where are we at, next slide? This one gives you, demonstrates the changes made over the last two years that were made upon board recommendation at the time for efficiency and cost-effectiveness. The new process eliminated work at the schools and provides parents and schools with a more streamlined approach. And again, our goal here is to provide you information of what was, what was change, and perhaps what's going to further change as we're looking at providing and developing quality neighborhood schools. Next slide. Enrollment options here will continue to encourage parents to seek out their resident school and assist schools with outreach to resident families. And again, what's highlighted here is our encouragement to make sure parents know that their first option always is their school of residence, and then if that's not the choice, then to continue to offer viable options for students across the board. Next slide. Possible changes for the future, and again, this is some high-level thoughts in terms of possible discussion for this evening. First bullet addresses an easy process change that will limit choices from the current five to three choices. Second bullet, change in articulation continuity will require a change to policy. This change will impact secondary schools and counselors during the articulation of all students. With this particular change, counselors would meet with the resident students at their elementary or middle feeders, and then seek out other resident students at non feeder elementary and middle schools for articulation back to their neighborhood school. Furthermore, if students apply or are accepted at their non-resident school, it will delay the master schedule for these students because we wouldn't know where to place them at the time. By starting with the 2013, 2014, if we choose to go in this direction, we will complete the students that have entered the system now with the district commitment that they can continue in their current feeder pattern through high school. Next slide. This slide simply addresses the positive aspects of continuity and sibling priority. Again, providing the cluster, the current program that we currently have with our areas will continue to promote that. Building community relationships will facilitate that within the cluster model. Because they would be reporting to their resident schools, clearly the enrollment process would be easier, and would then necessitate a change within the enrollment options office, and promote the fact that students can then focus on their themes within their neighborhood schools. Next slide. Current application process opened on November 1st, and over 4,000 applications were already submitted when the voluntary survey was added to the end of the application process. This is over a 12% return in survey response. We will be adding an online survey to both IB and magnet parents requesting similar Again, those are the, you can go back. These are just simply the statistics of the 12% return rate that we currently have. Depending on the research that you ask, 12% on an online survey could be considered good, or, again, depending on what we want, the information we want to gather, it could be construed as very low, 12%.
What I think is interesting about this, we can crosswalk this to our 12 attributes, and there is a connection here. Parents and students are going to go to a school that meets their needs on a number of fronts, and not just the academic, but the climate, the safety, the security, and so on, so forth. So if, again, if those 12 attributes are there and deliberately focused on across the district, we will meet that quality neighborhood school requirement.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Copeland for pointing out the alignment there between our quality neighborhood schools and the survey results. Next, we're going to focus on what we are thinking of potentially as a mindset change with the enrollment options, analyzing our market share information, our current demographics, and perhaps past patterns of the demographics, and how that has been attributing to that pie where 57%, 56% of our students are currently attending a school that's not their resident school. And how do we change our mindset and our current structures to be able to address that within our district? These here are simply the top marketing and recruitment strategies that currently the choice office has delineated as successful strategies at specialty schools. As clusters and neighborhood schools use these strategies, we will use an increase in the number of, we will see an increase in the number of students, therefore building a greater neighborhood resident market share. As mentioned earlier in Attachment 9, and one of the visuals, there are enrollment maps within your handouts. Diversity there at special schools assists in meeting our integration and deseg goals. Next slide, Mr. Stover.
Good afternoon. I'd like to share with you a little bit about some impact related to school choice from the business side of the House. If we can go to the next slide, please. Our instructional facilities in our FPC group have to very closely monitor our school capacity. Right now, if we look at what is today, we have schools with capacity utilization as low as 45% to 50%. We also have schools with utilization as high as 103% to 105%, and everywhere in between. So we have schools that could easily be receiving schools for students to come back to the neighborhood, and we have other areas of the district where we are at or above capacity. And balancing that, and decisions that are made related to school choice are a very important role of what our demography folks do, and our instructional facilities as well. One of the issues that we have been rather, I would describe it as lenient with, has been the movement of portables over the years between and onto campuses. We're suggesting that in order to really move from a more generous movement of portables to one that would facilitate neighborhood schools, that we only move portables in the future related to construction needs. For example, when we need to tear down a building, but we need to keep students housed on the campus to provide instruction, for example, as at Knox right now, that we move portables to provide construction space, and that we move portables for growth within a school, within the school attendance boundary right now. And, and that the ease with which a principal or a school might draw students from other district schools outside of that school's attendance boundary wouldn't be facilitated by moving portables there, but we would be, have a stricter portable movement policy. As we look at additional construction related to changes in choice policy, we have to realize that, again, we're very limited, in some cases, by capacity. We have almost an exact number of students from the San Diego High School cluster attending Mission Bay High School, as we have students from the Mission Bay High School cluster. Moving students directly back to San Diego High School that are now in attendance at Mission Bay would be very challenging, because we're at excess of 100% facility capacity at San Diego High School. So we would have to look at additional construction, perhaps under a future bond, or some type of funding to allow that to happen. So it's a real mixture. What we don't want to have happen, as I will talk to you now in transportation, let's move on to transportation, is where we have these business decisions driving choice decisions. We would rather have the choice decisions that you all implement as a board be made, and then we on the business side would let you know how that would impact a service that we provide, such as transportation. This chart shows you the, the total ridership, the number of routes that we have right now for our specialty schools. The number that Amy gave you in the chart that she showed you is the number, it's about 3.9 million. That's an important number for you to remember. About $3.9 million now that we use from general fund unrestricted to transport students within our magnet and V program. So if, for example, as we currently have on our, on our plate, so to speak, a $2 million reduction for next year, and a $2 million reduction for the next year in transportation, that would basically eliminate all transportation for magnet and V students across the district. If we looked at just the $2 million savings for next year, that's going to affect about 3,900 students, some 43 different buses. So you can see that transportation has a significant, is impacted significantly when we make different decisions. Next slide, and we have some chat-
Phil, before you go there, maybe you ought to talk about the implication of the governor's proposed budget for transportation, which is a factor we have to deal with before we even move out into the subsequent years.
Right, and that's right, good segue, Bill. That's right there on, on this slide. We're looking at as high as a $9 million impact to our district in loss of transportation funding as the governor has put the budget forward right now. That would obviously mean either a significantly increased subsidy of transportation with general fund unrestricted, or a significant decline in the transportation that we're providing the students. But the challenge that we have, going back up to the top of the slide there, is that any further transportation reductions next year or in future years require us to be in compliance with our union contract. Right now, there is a table in our union contract that sets the minimum number of drivers, extra board, and instructors that we need to have as a district. In order for us to reduce the numbers that are in those tables, we would have to eliminate the use of hourly drivers completely, which we can do, but the cost for that will be about approximately half a million dollars to reduce hourly drivers that we have currently. And we have done a really good job, under your direction over the past few years, of eliminating the contracting of buses. As you know, about what, three years ago now, we eliminated our first student over a period of two years, so we no longer-
You're welcome.
We have eliminated that. However, we do have some very, very limited usage of contracted coaches, not as in football coaches, but as in bus coaches, for grad nights, special events, trips to Disney, Disney World, those kind of utilizations. And we would have to eliminate the use of those coach buses and use our yellow buses for those events with our own drivers. That would then enable us to comply with the, with the union contract that we have to be in compliance with for us to continue to cut transportation. As Bill mentioned, the state has indicating to us that, we thought we were going to have about a $4.5 million reduction from the state, and now it looks like that has doubled to all of our funding that we get, which is about $9 million. So of course, that has a major, major impact on us going forward. Lastly, school consolidations. Our committee, our school realignment consolidation committee continues to meet, we met last week. Our focus at this point is not on closing schools. Our focus is on trying to identify within the district unique situations where it makes sense to change grade levels, where it makes sense to look at a consolidation of neighborhood schools, or where we know we have schools with significant capacity issues. Porter, Porter, for example, is over 100% utilized right now. So there are, there are schools like that where we have capacity issues, and we're looking to make recommendations to you as a board on a very minimal idiosyncratic level for specific situations, like we did with the Lincoln Cluster program, where we believe that will strengthen the academic program for those students as we create middle schools at MTM and Knox. And then also, you did approve five recommendations that are in the initial stages of completion, and our committee will follow along with those five to make sure that the work is being done as you directed, and that we're, we are moving forward. So we believe that, that some of our areas in the business side will be impacted by decisions that you make related to choice and choice continuity, either one. But we, on the business side, I think we're more comfortable with that than having you say, "Well, let's cut $3 million of something," and then trying to figure out the choice impacts of that. We believe it's much better to do it the other way. Thank you.
If I could just sum up very briefly, and then we'll turn it over to the trustees and the community. We tried to take the whole idea of quality school in every neighborhood, the vision the board had last March. Create our structure for how we would gauge a quality school is. Try to appreciate that we do have two overarching groups, one are our theme and atypical specialty schools, and our basic non-theme schools. Understand where this district has been in the last 40 years, and why there are such large movements of children. How do we adjust choice in order to achieve that quality academic experience at every school? Now you're seeing where we have to make adjustments in policy and procedure. And I would say that they're going to have to be very nimble, because we may alter one or two processes or policies, and discover that we have altered behavior and perhaps got a disconnect between transportation system, support, capacity at a school, and a policy. So I've asked for Phil to use his committee to help go off into a more wider strategic perspective in the near term here, to understand how many moving parts we have going on at any point in time, and are they in fact interfacing the way they should be. Let me give to the, the board members the, just what I think is a starting point for the kind of potential actions that we need to look at, and open it up for additional conversation. I mean, this is only the surface of a discussion about tactics, and where we have to make adjustments to achieve the quality neighborhood school.
Okay, first of all, one thing I failed to mention without a script was that for public testimony on this, this one agenda item, there are forums at the front table, so if anybody didn't complete that, they would need to do that by the time that we start the public testimony. Now, what I want to do in terms of the questions, again, this is not to get into big discussions about it, but there certainly are some clarifications I'm sure that board members want answered based on, on the presentation. So let's just start with our questions, and then we'll go to public comment. Ms. Jackson.
Just one clarifying question, and that was, how are we going to develop quality schools? Because I didn't, I didn't hear that. And my concern would be, the reason that, that needs to be clarified is before we make any decisions about choice, we have to make sure that the community knows that it's going to have a quality school. So what are our plans to develop the quality school in each neighborhood?
If you could, Melissa, go to page two, I believe, no, five, I'm sorry. This is the 12 traits, attributes that we believe capture what a quality neighborhood school is. We are working our way through this list to identify the actions and the evidence needed for this to occur. Some of this is subjective, some of this is qualitative, I should say qualitative versus quantitative, subjective versus objective. And we're working with the leadership team, now moving it down to the principal levels. And what I don't have here in front of you is the full-up, multi-page strategic process document that will detail what quality leadership is, what quality teaching is. And this is the document that's being refined and going out to the principal staff, and ultimately the community, the multi-page forum. I believe the latest version is available on, on the web right now, the state, the district web. But there's a whole lot more to follow on this area here that we could share with the
Other clarifying questions on the information presented?
Yeah, on the cost per student, page 15, I believe there was, that, on page 15, I think you broke out the cost per student. And then, and then after you, you said that, you said then there was eight extra teachers assigned, and then there was eight more people assigned to those schools for an additional $1.4 million. $1.4 million. Was that $1.4 million in additional monies accounted for in that cost per pupil breakdown average?
So they are included in the total general fund allocation. What I was trying to clarify was that the magnet schools followed the same base allocation formula as across all schools. The only additional funds that we allocated to them on the unrestricted side was the eight over-formula teachers, which we did set aside in the adopted budget, the 15 total for all schools. And then, as a result of our unaudited actuals, when we closed the book in September, we had a surplus ending balance of $900,000 that was to be restoring positions at the schools. And so we did restore eight positions from those funds to those magnet schools.
Right. So the $1.4 million in additional monies being spent on those kids is not accounted for in that six, in the average, on page 15?
It is in that average, because this is total general fund, restricted and unrestricted.
Okay.
But as far as outside of the formula model that we use for all schools, those 16 positions are outside of that model.
Okay.
But included in that dollar amount on slide 15.
Okay. And then you had mentioned that there was, that this doesn't include the $3.9 million in transportation, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Because it's kept in a central office budget. These are budgets kept at the school site.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, okay. And then, do we have any idea at all, a ballpark idea of, how many students are choicing into magnets because they're coming from a PI school, program improvement school, under No Child Left Behind?
I don't know that figure.
Okay.
I know just the total enrollment.
Would the choice staff know? I think I see Carolyn and Sandy back there.
Okay. Because the general perception for some people that I visit with is that everybody that goes to a magnet is just choosing to go there. And, you know, I want to try to get a better sense of how many people are, under No Child Left Behind, choicing out of their program improvement neighborhood school. And that's, I think, an important question.
I'm going to try to help a little bit with that. We don't have the exact data that you're asking for, but we will have it for you by tomorrow morning. But if you look at Attachment 6, which was the school choice data section, it does show, and as we were talking today, we were hearing 54 percent.
Tab 6?
Yes.
Okay. Sure.
It's pretty much towards the end.
Tab 3?
It's Attachment Stick 6, 2011-12 school choice data.
Do you have a page number?
No. Well, it's Attachment, it went through, I don't see a doc camera for you, so I can't help you there.
Attachment 6, page 3, maybe?
It looks like this. And there's a series of them.
Attachment 6, page 4.
And within that attachment, what it does state is that in 2011-12, there were 35.9 percent of students are choosing specialty schools within the district. That does not include charter schools. There are 16,000 more students choosing charter schools. And then, to sort of help with your question, when you're looking at the next slide, which is, or the next page of that attachment, it does show that 56% of the students are attending their neighborhood school, and program improvement makes up 8% of all choice in the district. Did you see, did you find that page?
We, yeah.
It looks like this. I'm sorry.
On the top, it says one neighborhood school, 56%?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And then, so when you're looking at magnet, you'll see that 6% of the children who are choose, of the district are going to magnet schools. Part of that 6%, or actually, more than 6% are going to magnet schools, the rest actually are part of program improvement school choice. And we did not pull out for you today, the percent above and beyond that 6% that are actually considered program improvement, that go to schools like in your area, Benchley and Green.
Okay. Thank you. The other question that I had was, did anybody, I know that we did this great survey of parents about why do you choose to go to the school you go to? On page 25, academic reputation, safety, and all those other good things that we want out of a quality local neighborhood school. And I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what would be the implications if they had the perception that their local neighborhood school didn't have any of those characteristics, and we, and the expectation was you have to go to your local community school, but the parents don't feel that their local community school meets any of these expectations or requirements? Would they then leave the school district? Would they leave and go into another school? And so, you know, I think that we have to talk about what are, we have to think about what are the implications for these children and these families? If they don't think that their local school is quality at all?
Mr. Biser, after the public comments, be happy to engage you in that conversation.
Okay. But my question is, did we, did we ask any, anything like that to anybody in the survey? What would you, if you had, if you were forced to go to your local school, what would you do?
No, we did not ask that.
Okay. We didn't ask what would, okay. And I don't know, that could be speculative, but it would be interesting to try to get some kind of input from parents on a survey. Oh, Ms. Jackson brought up something about how every, you know, do all high schools offer quality? And I think even Mr. Shanky, the general counsel, had mentioned that local, you know, it's about offering programs. And so my question to Ms. Meyer is, does every high school in San Diego offer a band class to kids that want to play in a band?
Currently, no.
No?
No.
So we have high schools where if you want to play the trumpet, you cannot?
I think we need to.
We're going to have a discussion about all this, but this is for the information that was presented, if there's any other questions about the, about the.
Yeah, well, the, I'm asking the question, do all of our schools offer quality program right now? And so, there are a couple of things that I just was wondering.
Okay.
Do all of our high schools offer band?
I would just say, to move on, that as far as the reason the districts are engaging in a quality schools program is because we recognize that we do not have an equitable quality program across the district, and that's what we need to move towards. But let's have a discussion about that.
But I think the bigger issue is whether or not, we're talking about making decisions tonight about choice and transportation, and I have a very difficult time having this conversation, not having had the conversation about how we're going to obtain quality schools in every neighborhood. It does not sit well for us as a district to say, "We're going to limit your choice," when we have not done what we said we were going to do, which was have a quality school in every neighborhood. And I'll wait till after the public comments, but I, that's part of the conversation.
Okay.
So then would I wait to ask Nellie Meyer about other programs to see if we have, if all of our schools offer the same programs for later?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brera and then Mr. Burnett.
Just a couple of quick questions. If you could go back to the funding per student slide, slide 15. Why is it that magnet schools actually receive $300 per student less on average than non-specialty schools?
Because this includes their restricted allocations. Not every school would get Title I, not every school would have the level special ed.
Yeah. Thanks. And then, thanks, Amy. And then, I think we skipped over the marketing and recruitment notification slide. So maybe we'd want to talk about that a little bit in our question. I guess it's, it's, it's the first main page in Phil's presentation. Phil just skipped right over.
Yeah, that was the last page of SIDS.
That was the last page of SIDS.
But the, you know, marketing and recruiting certainly is very, very important, because what we've talked about as a staff, what, what we've talked about as a staff, page 27? We're talking, we're talking about page 27? What we've talked about as a staff is not denigrating the choice program for the purpose of having students attend their neighborhood schools, but of improving and making their schools quality, and then marketing that, and making sure everyone realizes that that is the case. That's been our general direction.
We had talked, we've talked a few times about when the program improvement letter goes out to the school, saying, "By the way, you've got a terrible school that your kid's going to, and you can move your kid out of your school." Where are we in putting in an insert or a separate letter about, "Here's the things that are working really well with your, with your kid's school"? Have we done anything about that?
I think Sandy, Sandy could speak to that, and Ron.
Yes.
We invited schools this year to submit some information to us. Given the time constraints, not all of them were able to do that, but letters did go out this year with inserts for a number of schools.
So we did put inserts in some schools?
Yes.
Okay. And the goal would be to do that in every school next year, if we had a little bit more time?
Certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Burnett?
The slide that Mr. Biser and Mr. Brera referred to, page 15, if you were to believe the numbers there, I'm not saying they're inaccurate, but they're very misleading, because basically it says, "Boy, we could save a lot of money if we make every school a magnet school in the district." So it really is misleading the discussion. But on the, on the specific number, Ms. Amy, Ms. Schagelford, as I understand funding sources, these are all the dollars that these specialty schools get total. Is that correct?
In the general fund, restricted and unrestricted.
So what we don't have here, except for the transportation item, I believe, is what do these specialty schools get, all of these, in dollars that are discretionary, that are greater than the quote, "non-typical" school gets? So is it, putting aside the standard X-factor and all that, I mean, we're not saying that these schools are getting $166 million more than all the other schools, right?
No.
We're saying, so we, the question is, can we find out and determine how much more it costs for us to operate all the magnet schools, and IB, and language, et cetera, so we know how much extra we are essentially subsidizing those schools, of which many are in my district, including IB and Crown Point and Longfellow and Mandarin? So that's the number that we need to understand. So can we get that number figured out?
So outside of the 16 positions, the eight over-formula and the eight that went towards IB restoration, those are the two, only two exercises that we did to supplement the, those schools on the unrestricted side.
At the end of the budget year, or total?
In the fall. In the fall, when we went through, third Friday, and we looked at the enrollments, and some schools had requested over-formula teachers, so there were eight that were given to those specialty schools. And in addition, when we reviewed the unaudited actuals, and there was that $900,000 of surplus ending balance, subset of that went to help the IB restoration. So those were those eight positions. So it was the total of one, of 16 positions or $1.4 million.
So you're saying we're only, forgetting transportation for a minute?
Forgetting transportation.
We're spending only district-wide $1.4 million more to support all these programs at these magnet atypical schools beyond the, what other schools are being made? So it's the transportation plus 1.4?
Yes. In the past, we had given, we had tier-three allocations that were allocated to these schools, and as part of the 11-12 budget solutions, we cut that $3 million. So they no longer receive that supplemental to run those programs. So they follow the same X-factor model as the, as the other schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And I would, I would just add, Amy, I mean, I think that we, there could be some more depth that we would go into in terms of this. For example, the $166 million, we don't really know what to compare that to.
Exactly.
We just know that that's the forecast, that would be one thing.
We could provide a review on the unrestricted side of a little bit more detail of base allocation versus other resources, so that you could see that it follows the same trend as the non-specialty schools.
And then we also see that with the allocation, there's proportionally more over-formula in the magnet schools than in the other schools, the way it worked out. And one of the differences seems to be also in terms of the, which would work in the opposite direction, actually, but smaller versus larger school, that there might be some magnet schools that are getting more money because they're a small school, not because they're a magnet school.
Right. So the X-factor methodology had different weighted factors depending on enrollment. So that could be the case, where the larger schools had a higher ratio when we applied the X-factor compared to the smaller schools that had a smaller factor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this point, we will go to public testimony, and then after that, we'll have a board discussion about this. Okay. We will, let me see. Okay. We're going to give a maximum of three minutes to each speaker, please. The yellow light will come on at two minutes. Try to wrap it up at that point, and so that we can have a chance to hear everybody has to speak. So watch closely for the yellow light and finish up. I'd like to call up Michael Rabin, John Maylander, and Monica Howard. You can speak in any order of those three people. You can just go ahead and come over and stand over here on the side, and I'll be ready to speak.
Hello to board trustees, superintendent, and all representatives of the board. My name is Mick Raven. 8130 La Mesa Boulevard. I'm a teacher at Oak Park Elementary School. I've spent the entirety of my teaching career, including subbing and student teaching at Oak Park Music Conservatory since 1993. I've had students whose learning styles and levels have been as diverse as the cultural and ethnic backgrounds from which they derive. The students at Oak Park reflect all that is beautiful about San Diego Unified and represent a stunning microcosm of America. Once upon a time, there was a school named Andrew Jackson Elementary, located just up the street from Oak Park. My sister, brother, and I all attended Jackson and hit the lottery with our sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Okowski. After moving on to Horace Mann and Crawford, we stayed in touch, and I'm glad to have called him my friend and retroactive colleague until 2011, when he passed away at the age of 92. If you ask most students who had Mr. O., they point to any number of qualities that made Mr. O. special. I know this will come as little shock to anybody here, but nobody ever seems to get fired up about his zeal for test preparation. I suspect that few people who think of a great teacher would ever point to that as a memorable quality. Joe Okowski was a very multifaceted person. A World War II vet and a professional musician were other hats that he wore, but he maintained a noteworthy balance between his obvious fascination with science, literature, art, and a decidedly devout personal life. Some students point to the weather instruments, some point to the science experiments or the research projects, but nobody, nobody misses Mr. Okowski's penchant for music and weaving it into the fabric of the class. That love of music was so pervasive, genuine, and life-altering, that students would talk in hushed whispers about how they hoped they'd get him as their teacher. That music could be such a liberating joy and pursuit wasn't apparent to me before Mr. Okowski, but Mr. O. opened up a world of not only music playing, performance, and singing, but appreciation for something that is one of the things that simultaneously connects us with and elevates us above other life forms, the ability to express ourselves in ways that transcend written and verbal form. I could go on about Mr. O., but the point is that he can't, you can't, he can't tell me what he'd think of this whole budgetary mess right now, but I would wager good money that every kid in Mr. O.'s class would beg you to keep music in our schools at any cost. Music and art allows students to express themselves in profound ways that other media are not able to do. The music magnet at Oak Park is a way that we can provide these students with a broad curriculum and a face and a voice, and is easily one of the most outstanding music programs in the county. Oops, I forgot the R., that, that should have said country. Thousands of students have gone through Oak Park hallways and had the incredible opportunity to learn how to read music, practice an instrument, that they could take home and perform on this instrument in multiple public exhibitions. this instrument in multiple public exhibitions. Please, please do not let Oak Park's music program go. We are located in East San Diego, and our students comprise a very, very needy and deserving population that cannot afford to lose the shiny sapphire of Oak Park's music. I urge you, I urge the board to consider this when making any and all budgetary considerations.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is John Maylander, and I attended Oak Park Elementary School specifically for the Music Magnet program. The program was an incredibly important step in my life. It introduced me to encouraging teachers and mentors and set me on the path of pursuing my passion for music as a full-time career. I am now in my sixth semester at the Berklee College of Music in Boston. I feel that magnet programs of any field are highly important in providing diverse creative outlets for young kids and encouraging them to be well-rounded human beings. And with the time I have left, I'm just going to play a tune that I wrote, a quick tune.
Thank you, John. That was perfect timing, too.
Excuse me, my name is Monica Howard, and I'm actually John's mother. And John went to his neighborhood school for kindergarten, and it was actually his kindergarten teacher who recognized his unique style of learning and his interest in music.
And she was the one who recommended that we look into Oak Park. And we did, and John started there in first grade. And at Oak Park, he was exposed to music at an early age and a variety of musical instruments. And he was encouraged by his teachers to pursue music throughout school. His classes were enhanced as music history and appreciation were woven throughout. He also was submerged in a culturally diverse community and developed friendships with kids of many nationalities and backgrounds, and he formed common bonds with teachers that continue today. He did, in fact, pursue music throughout school, and like he said, he's now in his third year at the Berklee College of Music in Boston. And I realize that not every student who attends Oak Park will continue in music, and not every student who attends a science or language magnet will pursue those fields. But I believe it's so important to give these kids an opportunity to explore different options, to find a passion, and discover a place where they can excel. Attending magnet programs helps create an atmosphere where kids can be accepted for a variety of talents. This is so important for kids who may not be interested in playing football or basketball, or they might not be on the dean's list or love math, but they might find that they love the violin or have a talent for art or languages. It's critical that students continue to have these options. Thank you.
Okay, Jerome Terry, Milton Martin, Citizen.
Hi, my name is Joanne Terry, and I have been the instrumental music director at Oak Park Music Conservatory since 1991. We have all heard and know that music enhances academics because music is math, science, literacy, history, and physical education. We are here tonight to keep music alive at Oak Park Elementary Music Conservatory Magnet. Students north of eight often have experiences that students south of eight never have the chance to participate in on their own. Resources or finances keep students from activities such as buying or renting an instrument to participate in an instrumental music program. Oak Park Music Conservatory is south of eight. We have the equipment to prepare them for instrumental music in middle school through high school. Even though this year we are short on manpower, we were three FTEs and coaches. This year, it's just myself, and we are working on no budget. We do not have money to even repair the instruments that the students use at our school. Many of our students come back to tell us about their plans for college or music scholarships that they have received. We ask you to keep Oak Park Elementary open as the elementary music conservatory magnet, and any additional help you can send our way would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Milton Martin, Jr., principal of Oak Park Elementary School. And first of all, I'd like to thank the board for your support of our Music Magnet this school year by reinstating one of our three FTE music teachers for this school year. We really appreciate that, and thank you for it. We also want to thank the BAPA Department for their generosity in providing a music teacher to help our orchestra two days a week as well. And that's been a tremendous benefit and a blessing to Ms. Terry in running the music program by herself this year. As you tackle these very challenging budget issues, I just simply want to request, a simple request that I have, is that in keeping a quality school in the Oak Park Elementary Music Conservatory community, that the board, and that we're able to continue to offer a rigorous and broad curriculum, that the board approve maintaining and/or increasing our current music teacher FTE for the 2012-2013 school year. This will continue to make our site an attractive and desirable choice for teaching and learning for our neighborhood students as well as others. Thank you.
All staff work on quality neighborhood schools is useless unless students are afforded the same opportunities at all the schools. Like trustee Beiser was stating, is there music at every school? For years, I've watched magnets north of eight get a lot of extra money for the magnet programs, which drew the students in. Why aren't we going to provide that for every school? Another thing that you can do to provide quality schools is to have counselors listen to the students and the requests that they're making about their interests and their strengths. District policies have been put in place by the Board of Education, but the schools don't follow those policies. They don't give the information to students so that students can make choices for themselves. There's a lot of talk about critical thinking and about teaching our students to think for themselves, but it's circumvented because San Diego Unified staff don't inform students that they can make choices. An example would be that they have the opportunity to choose the sequence of their science courses. Most schools just tell students, "You're going to take these classes in this order," whether it helps that child achieve or not. These are some of the things that need to be evaluated when you're talking about quality schools in every neighborhood. There are students that are being forced to sit in courses that they don't need. Why is this going on? At SCPA, there was a senior that was put in two PE classes. That senior had already completed PE courses. He's just sitting in a class. So those are all issues that need to be looked at, and it's not just about moving modules or configuring schools in a certain way. It's about giving students choices and respecting their individual choices and giving them information. Don't just tell them, "Oh, well, the district policy says this." Include the entire district policy, not just the policy which is convenient for the staff to let people know about.
Okay, Larry Isom and Aurora Alexander.
Good evening. My name is Aurora Alexander, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Oak Park Elementary. This is my second year as a teacher in the district. And I went to Oak Park as a student, so did my sister, and she chose orchestra and I chose chorus. And then from Oak Park, which was my neighborhood schools behind my house, I chose to go to SEPA with Kendra. And I started off with chorus and went on to dance, as well as the visual and performing arts. And I went to San Diego State University, where I also emphasized in visual arts for my teaching credential. And I really feel that art is a really important aspect in a person's life. It makes all of us creative. It makes us have dedication to a passion that we have because all of us in some way have art in our background, whether it be music, dance, theater, art. And I know a lot of my peers who couldn't be here tonight, but they are excellent musicians. My sister played the stand-up bass until she was a senior in high school and was first chair, and it helped her a lot with her math. She's probably better at math than I am. And if I were to go to my neighborhood schools instead of SEPA, I would have gone to Crawford or Horace Mann. And at the time, it wasn't a place that my family thought was safe for me. So we went to SEPA, and I wouldn't change it at all. And I'm very sad to hear that Oak Park might lose their magnet because I think that children really need music in their life. They need some type of art in their life, and to know that, the school that I used to go to is going to lose what mattered most is really, um, sorry, it's really painful to hear that because when I found out I'd get to teach at my elementary school, I was really excited because it just, it was a really important part of my life. I loved performing, I loved singing, and I see that these kids love that, too. And to know that we only have Ms. Terry and we don't have a chorus is, it's hurtful to some of my students because a lot of them love to sing, but they can only play an instrument. I feel that you guys are talking about quality schools, and art is needed to have a quality life. We all enjoy art, we listen to music, we go see performances. We won't have all that if we take that away from our future. These kids are our future, they're what we need. And I think that you also had in a slide that elementary schools are about creating the whole person, and music definitely creates our passion. It creates our behavior and discipline. It gives us creativity, sorry, creativity and dedication. And I think that to take that away from children when all of us have the opportunity is not fair to creating this humanity that we want and society that we're looking towards, we can't, it's just, it wouldn't be fair. So, sorry about the emotion, but it's really important that you don't take that away from our school. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Isom. I'm a school bus driver, a union member, and thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak. I went to Oak Park Elementary. My daughter went to Oak Park Elementary. She graduated and went to SEPA and went on to UC Santa Cruz in performing arts. Currently going to college in New York. The decisions you have to make are tough. The decisions you have to make about quality schools, I think every school should be a quality school. I think we can all agree with that. I'm old enough to know what happened. How can I say it? How many of you have heard of separate but equal? Okay, I know what happens when you separate people. Now, we can give them equal education, we can give them a quality education. Separate but equal does not work and will not work. Please, guys, be careful with the decisions that you're making. I'm concerned about the future of our children here. Budgets set aside, not about, people that I know, I might even lose my own job if you cut transportation. But what's more important for us here is the education of students. Please, make smart choices about the budget cuts and think about what, you need teachers in classrooms. You don't need 150 people in offices up here. Guys, think about making the right choices and the choices for students. You use terms like market share, tactics. Those are business terms. This is not a business. This is education, and we need to treat education with respect, and that's what's important, guys. Please, make smart choices. We have done a good job of integrating our schools. Ms. Larry, you quoted and you said that the court said we did a good job. Let's continue to do it. We've done a good job. Let's continue to do it. Thanks, guys.
Okay, there was one more I didn't call. John Medina.
Good afternoon, superintendent and members of the board. My name is John Medina. I'm a teacher at Hawthorne Elementary in the Madison Cluster. I have been there for 15 years. I am here because I have grave concerns regarding what I consider to be an unbalanced and excessive use of the choice program at San Diego Unified. For the past 15 years, I have witnessed a steady exodus of students who have left the Madison Cluster to choice into the UC Cluster or other similar clusters. This steady exodus of students due to choice has had a negative impact on the Madison Cluster schools. It has exacerbated the problem of low enrollment. This is a problem that is common to most of the Madison schools, including Whitman, Fields, Sequoia, Lafayette, and of course Hawthorne, which have all at one point or another been considered foreclosure due to low enrollment. We need to realize that the loss of families due to choice means a loss of parent volunteers. Year after year, I've seen the loss of some of our most active parent volunteers who have decided to choice out of our school. The loss of families due to choice also means the loss of money to fund our PTAs and foundations. This is important because PTAs and foundations often use their money to sponsor PE, art, and music classes, as well as field trips and other extracurricular activities. Related to this, it is my understanding that Marie Curie and other similar schools in upscale neighborhoods have PTA budgets that are about three times the size of our Hawthorne PTA budget. This results in unequal educational outcomes. This is especially true since many of the families that we have lost due to choice are middle to upper-middle income families. This brings me to my next point, which is that the choice program in the Madison Cluster has exacerbated traditional segregation patterns, segregation patterns based on race, socioeconomic class, and language. Many of the families that we have lost... Many of the families that we have lost due to the choice, due to choice, have been white, middle to upper-middle income families with native English speakers as children. Specifically in my school, specifically my school has become increasingly and disproportionately low-income and English language learner community. We should be concerned of a program that, in my view, has encouraged segregation patterns between the Madison Cluster and the UC Cluster. In short, the choice program, as it is currently practiced, has resulted in a mal-distribution of parental, financial, and academic resources between certain clusters. And at least in my cluster, the Madison Cluster, it has exacerbated segregation patterns based on race, socioeconomic class, and language. If our goal is to create a great school in every neighborhood, then I encourage the board to make substantive changes to the choice program. Indeed, I would assert that we cannot, it is not possible to create quality neighborhood schools as long as we continue to encourage families to leave their neighborhood, to attend schools elsewhere. If anything, we need to start encouraging families to have a commitment to their communities, neighborhood, and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, excuse me, we can now begin our board discussion on this item. I would just encourage the board members to look at the policies that the superintendent is recommending as a basis of discussion, since this is the staff recommendation that says policies to complement the strategic process for quality schools. And I know Ms. Jackson wants to, you want to have, okay, we can have Mr. Koba go through this list, and then we will have comments by the board members.
Thank you, President Evans. I want to maybe clarify what we're trying to share with everyone tonight. This is not a presentation focused on dismantling the magnet and specialty school program. It's not a discussion of dismantling our choice program whatsoever. It is about thinking about the next steps. I think there is no debate among any of us here that we all want a quality school in every neighborhood. Some of those will be quality district schools with a generic focus, some will be quality schools with a theme focus. And in order to bring quality across the entire district, we've got to reassess our policies and practices of the past, make adjustments, so that at the end of four or five years, in 2016, 17, we can say to each other and to the public at large that every one of these schools is a first-rate, a quality school. It meets all the attributes, ranging from a broad engaging curriculum, to great leadership, to high expectations, to optimal parent engagement. So in order to get there, we've got to phase in incrementally, make adjustments, not go whole hog without understanding the consequences for what we're trying to do here. So with that in mind, where I'm trying to head in making these strategic adjustments over the next few years is take a look at the choice program. There are anomalies here where we have certainly moved, migrated, large numbers of residents' kids from one neighborhood to the next, some of it having to do based on surveys with actual or perceived concerns about quality. So we do need to look at the choice program. We have to understand what we can offer and manage expectations for students and parents based on what's available, what are the capacities at other schools. We can't create or continue, I should say, a mindset that said, principals out there, maximize your capacity at this school, regardless of whether or not you're drawing simply the children within the enrollment boundary. We then create overutilization situations, which now require us to move portables or do other things that may not necessarily be affordable or smart for what we're trying to do in promoting neighborhood schools. So discussing choice, how it's applied, asking parents and students why they want to move, taking that information and using it to maybe correct imbalances that are occurring in different parts of our district. So one is clearly looking at the choice environment and carefully and incrementally making adjustments. Two, I think that as we take a look at the shifts that will occur, we can't predict all of the behavior between parents, students, and staff. But as we look at the parents and the student and the movement, what are we doing to bring balance? We want to nurture, we want to preserve the wonderful diversity of this district, and to avoid racially isolated schools. We had them in the 1970s, we have them today for any number of demographic patterns and trends, and those have to be mitigated. We also have to take a look at how we are funding. It is clear that over the last few years, we have, over time, reduced the amount of funding that has gone into the IB program, the magnet schools, and the specialty schools. There were instances where we had special earmark funding, whether it was in the categorical, non-categorical, it was there. And we have had to remove that funding, and that has had a negative impact for all kids, regardless of whether it was a quality or specialty school. But we still need to revisit the general fund and how it supports all schools. Transportation, only four years ago, we were talking about a program that was somewhere close to $50 million, operating over 500 buses and moving almost 20,000 children. I mean, those numbers have all, and I'm giving you approximations, but those numbers have all shrunken in the last three or four years, because we couldn't afford what we were doing those years ago. No one's defending whether it was right or wrong, it became an issue of affordability. But coming back around is the issue of what makes sense for what can we do today? We are not a home-to-school transportation district, and yet, as Mr. Stover said earlier, we're going to incur a $9 million cut this year, because the state as a whole is cutting deeply into transportation. That in and to itself would force us to reconsider how we use transportation as a tool for advancing the academic goals of our district. The facility piece, we've talked about. Exactly where and how are schools configured, what are their capacities, what are their material conditions? It should be a matter of equity and access for all of us, that all facilities should be accepting, receiving, and of a quality material condition. We've been working on that through Prop MM and Prop S, but how do we go into the future and make those adjustments? And lastly is the consolidation piece. While we've only closed one school in the last few years, there is greater pressure on try to understand how to support underutilized small schools. Can you realign or consolidate? Again, that's where Mr. Stover has gone with his thinking for the last year-plus, where I want to take it in the near term. Can we bring certain schools or themes together? Perhaps we can, and maximize the resources and the quality of the academic experience. So every one of these is a starting point for actions that we want to take and further explore. And my honest belief is, the more we drill down into these areas, there'll be greater discovery of things we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Koba. And for the benefit, one moment, Ms. Jackson, for the benefit of the public, since we're looking at a paper here that you don't have, and Mr. Koba was just referring to, I will just read through it very quickly, so you'll see what some of the recommendations are to move forward with this process. First of all, it says on choice, the choice option will be retained in San Diego Unified, that we would redefine choice capacity not by counting portables as available space. In calculating class size, we would use the pre-budget crisis number, so we wouldn't plan on having large classes forever. Prior to making the choice applications, families would be required to participate in an organized visit of the neighborhood school. Parents must also complete a survey regarding their reasons for leaving the neighborhood school and exercising their choice option at the same time that they apply. The enrollment options office will become the neighborhood school's office with enrollment options information. And then the other area is integration. District will continue to monitor diversity and integration as attendance pattern shift. Race and human relations will develop programs for interaction between racially isolated schools. Specialty programs, or themed programs, as he was referring to, phase out over the next four years. The extra general fund, funding of specialty programs, and that's been called into question today, by replacing with outside funding, so that neighborhood schools will be adequately funded. Transportation, again phasing out the general fund unrestricted subsidy of the specialty schools and vehicle transportation. Facilities, transportation and facilities adjustments will be simultaneous. Ongoing adjustment of facilities with portables and future construction according to attendance patterns over the next four years. And finally, school consolidation, to continue the work of the School Consolidation and Realignment Committee, to bring forth periodic recommendations for consolidation, realignment, to improve neighborhood schools as attendance pattern shift. And before we begin the discussion, I just want to remind the board that we had a workshop in February 2011 that we followed up with in a meeting, and I'll just pass out a copy of that just for you to refer to, because it's kind of interesting that it has pretty much the same items that Mr. Koba is bringing to us tonight about the different adjustments that we need to make. Okay? That said, we can begin the discussion with Ms. Jackson.
Certainly, thank you for bringing this forward, and thanks to staff for all of what they've been doing towards this. And I, before I start my comments, the first question is, what is the expected, are you expecting us to approve these items that are listed here to go into some kind of a policy? Or are you going to take our conversation today and develop a policy and bring it back at a later date for approval?
Well, I think this is the starting point. These are the recommendations, but recommendations that would be refined based on input today and further study of these areas.
We will have a district policy, though, that this will be implemented.
Absolutely. I mean, we're not there today to.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so first of all, I'll start with the actual sheet here. And my first concern is certainly, I don't want to do away with choice, again, unless we have our quality school item laid out, which I'll get to in a few minutes. But on this sheet here, it says specialty programs. There's also a concern, it talks about phasing it out. While I understand that some schools have the capacity to write and obtain grants for outside, there are some schools in our district that have support for seeking those outside grants and funding. So if we eliminate that, that means that these schools will not have the ability to raise funds for specialty programs, and I have a concern with that. On our presentation, I would like to refer to page five first, which is the list of quality schools indicators. And I think what would help this board member is that, as you have these 12.
Excuse me, did you say transportation?
No, I said page five.
Oh, page five, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. As what we have this board member, I'll slow down trying to not, I know we've got a long conversation.
There's no buzzer going to go on.
No buzzer anymore? Oh, why?
Not until we need it.
Okay, okay. What I would, what my concern is, is that before we limited the choice to parents, that we have developed quality schools in every neighborhood. So in looking at this list of 12, the first says access to a broad and challenging curriculum. What is our baseline for that? What does that look like? And how are our schools faring in that? And that goes back to the question that Mr. Byers asked, is there a ban? Is it the expectation of this board to have ban at every school? And so is it, what is our expectation at our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools? And where are we today? And so that certainly helps us be able to say, we are 80% to having quality schools in every neighborhood, and what do we need to get there? Because it's difficult to tell parents, we don't want you to choice out of your community school. And they're hearing these things, but we can show them that, you know what, those things really are in your area, or at that particular school. And we will only know that if we have that defined list and we have inventoried our schools to find out. Then the next item, I mean, some of these things, like you mentioned before, are only subjective things, but when it comes to, you know, all of these need to be qualified. Parent-community engagement around student achievement, is that our regular school-site council meetings, are you considering those, the meetings? And if so, then the schools are having them. But to be able to take all of these and specify them, so we can quantify them, and say, these are the things that we're looking for, and this is where your school is on that continuum. So every school has maybe a dashboard or a benchmark that says, on number one, we are 80%, on number two, we're 90% or whatever, so that we know where we're trying to get to.
I think you are on the right track.
Okay. On the general fund, on page 15, I think it's been commented already, but I just want to echo it, is that the numbers here make it look like, and we have to be careful about this against staff, that when we're putting together these items, just go out to the public, and they say, well, why don't every school become a magnet? If their appropriate allocation is less, then they don't, they don't have everything that we have. So all of a sudden, their general, and I'll get this tomorrow from somebody at least two or three times, saying, well, Ms. Jackson, why don't we have all our schools magnet schools? It's less for us to run, it costs less to run magnet schools, which we know is not true, but that's what they're seeing in this written document. And so we have to explain that a lot in public, and sometimes we need to make sure that we have those addendums inside the document. And then just my last comment for this round, hopefully, would be on page number 23. And on page number 23, again, if we're looking at, and this is something that I think in the policy, you know, certainly acceptable, you're limited to three choices, you can't just make a whole laundry list. And so, and then at the February 15, I think it's important, and I think our schools are getting it almost, that February 15 is the drop dead date. Because, and they have to understand how people, you know, would go past that date, and they would beg and plead, and, but they have to know that we have a certain cutoff date, that after that particular date, we cannot entertain choice unless it's something very specific. And I'm happy that we did it for the promised people, because that was a special circumstances. But outside of special circumstances, and here you put new to the district only, then that is our cutoff date, because it really affects, and it really affects the other schools that are losing and receiving students. Thank you.
Okay, other board members? Mr. Burnett.
I have a, I agree with Ms. Jackson's, her first comments about this 12, 12-step, if you will.
12-step.
Criteria.
My name is.
And I might want to add a couple. I was actually talking, I think a number of sort of the Panasonic Foundation people today, and my issue is, as the board has discussed before, right now, most parents use two factors, I think, for determining where to start their kids off to school. They say, ask their friends, neighbors, et cetera, what do you think about this school? And they hear. And then there's the mysterious API, which nobody knows what that means, but we know that higher is better. And this board, I think all agrees, that we should have go beyond test scores for measuring success at school. So we have this criteria, but what is, how do you measure it? What is this, how do you quantify it? And I think a first step would be, not only let the principals have feedback, but send this to the clusters and in different, and say, well, this is what the board is thinking, is how do you, we want to get to a point, and I hate to say it, we probably figure out some other grade again, because people want to, an answer. And if they don't have, if you don't give them something, they're going to use API numbers. So let, and in different clusters, different things may have different weights. Safety may be bigger in one cluster, digital literacy may be bigger in another. The irony is, in all these items that we have, the one we don't have is test scores, which is one we are not going to stop using. So it should be part of the measurement. So I think taking this and starting the process of sending it out to the clusters and saying, this is what we believe is a method, you all give us feedback, and maybe by next September, we can actually start the measuring in some way, these factors.
You're right on the mark, too. I think, one, we need to do some baseline surveying. Define quality indicators to the point where clusters and parents and principals and staff all understand, then do the baseline, and we can understand where we are with all of this. That's why I say it has to be in an incremental fashion.
So I agree with Ms. Jackson on this, and I think we need to move in that direction. And I think this is the good template. And hopefully, maybe staff could come back with a plan or a timeline out two, three years of quantifying it, grading it, back to getting input, back to where we are today. And then, so we can get to that point. So when next year, or in a few years, when we put slides up and we show test score growth, we'll be also be able to show other factors that help determine a quality neighborhood Choice, the fact that 57,000, I guess is the number, kids don't go to the neighborhood school. We have this initial survey, and I appreciate staff had very little time to put this together and get it out, but I think it needs some work, and it. But I think it needs some work, and as in one of the recommendations, it should be mandatory. I, both my kids' choice to other schools, for maybe none of the reasons that are on the survey. I personally, as a parent, don't want to limit choice. But there's a difference between offering choice and encouraging it, driving kids literally towards it, and subsidizing it, and, which is contrary to the board's view of neighborhood schools. So I think the goal of this board member, I think, all is, you know, these first four items under choice, I believe, that the superintendent brought forward, I support all these and believe we should act on this as our template of our policy. I would add one other item, personally, unless, on item three, unless there is free or reduced lunch, families have food and reduced lunch, or some other exemption, I believe every parent, including myself, who wants to choice, should pay an application fee. Because it takes staff time to fill that out. I mean, we're spending money to send, and so if, unless you're exempt through free and for reduced lunch or some other purpose, it should be a $25 fee or something, because it takes, we're spending staff time on this effort. And, you know, it's not charging for the, and the question is whether we legally can do that. We're not charging for them to go to school. We're saying, we're gonna, we're spending, I don't know how much, but I think we should look at, at that as part of it. So I would, I support these four items. I think we should adopt them today. Now, it doesn't mean we can implement them all by February 15, obviously, because, but at least as a, as a policy. Although I'd like, in addition to item three, at least to look at, can we charge an application fee for a, the staff to do basically extra work to decide to send my kids out of a neighborhood school to another community? So I'd like to look at that aspect as well, and accept, so I guess I would move items as the board supports as a policy, items one through four, with the addendum that we explore the legality and the, of being able to charge an application fee for these services.
Okay. Could we, I would suggest if we have a little more discussion, and then we can kind of go through the items and take the motions at that point?
Well, I'm just trying to move us along. It's six o'clock, we were going to end at six, and this board discusses a lot of things, but often doesn't do anything. So if nobody wants to second this motion as these items, which are pretty, you know, it says the choice option, we retain to send againified.
Well, I, I'll be ready to move on as soon as Mr. Bizer and Ms. Barrera have a chance to comment.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll second Mr. Barnett's motion, and then for the sake of more discussion. But just want to make sure, double check with Mr. Shanky that we can take action tonight. This is not-
Sure. Absolutely.
With Mr. Shanky.
Well, any agenda that you've posted, and if you're taking some kind of motion concerning the item that you described, the answer is yes, you can take some action. The question becomes, I think, is, I don't know where Ms. Jackson's going to go, but as far as adopting a whole new district policy?
Not the actual policy. The, the agenda item is board direction-
The answer is yes.
Board direction to staff implementation of quality neighborhood schools. The things that we would approve, they would go and develop and bring back more officially.
That was what I thought, that was what I thought we were going to do, is that we were going to have our discussion, and he was going to bring forth some policy. If we already have a policy, he was going to update that policy that we would then approve.
But we're, but basically, the motions would be to, for him to move forward on this one, and that one, and that one, and not to move forward on the other one? Okay? And that's what-
Well, I did have, I did have a question, one question on item, transportation item. Isn't this inconsistent with the budget that you're currently proposing? Because the current budget, I believe, calls for two-year cut in next year's budget, and a, excuse me, a $2 million cut in next year's budget, a $2 million cut in the following year, which is meaning reduce over two years, and you're saying four years here. Is that correct?
Yeah. The current, the current plan in, in the reductions call for the elimination in effect of VEP and magnet transportation over two years.
This is inconsistent with the December 15 budget that this board approved then? Because the board approved preliminarily a two-year plan.
Can we, can we clarify Mr. Barnett's motion? I understood that the motion was to support items one through four.
Right.
Okay. Good choice, Eric.
Items one through four. Okay, items one through four. Okay, so let's, on that particular item, and I'll let Mr. Bizer speak, but we have a motion, the second, to approve the, the choice items, which would retain choice and to have an application process as outlined here. Mr. Barnett?
Bizer. He has hair. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with item number two-
Of choice?
On the choice. Redefine choice capacity by not counting portables as available space. A portable is a classroom. And so we're going to have a lot of empty classrooms in a lot of schools where parents could have sent their kids. The second part of number two is use pre-budgeted crisis class size for calculation of space. So if we, if we have to increase class sizes, but we're only saying that we have the capacity for fewer students than what we're actually putting in a classroom, again, we're going to have a lot of empty classrooms. And the reason why I'm a little bit concerned about this is, I would like to see, you know, how is this going to affect? You know, could we just get, on, on item number two, can we please just get an Excel spreadsheet of all the schools? How many, what's their current capacity? And what would their new capacity be under these parameters? Because when we don't ask for specifics, we come, we find out later that, oops, we made a mistake. Or maybe this wasn't exactly aligned with the intent of the board. And before I move on number two, I'd really like to see more information first, to clearly understand how that's going to impact schools. Because there are some schools, maybe, that have portable classrooms currently sitting on their school property, or they have school classrooms, and they have parents that are, that are getting their kids to that school without any busing. And we have a few of those schools. And so I want to make sure that we're not turning away kids if we have empty classrooms, and parents that are willing to provide that transportation, so there's no liability on the transportation side. Is that unreasonable to ask for that?
I would agree with Mr. Bizer that I think if we ask that these are policy outlines, and that the staff come back and give us the impacts of all of these, and then we will, could always modify them or change them. So that way, it would answer all those questions that we've raised.
And the only, and then the other thing on item number four, the, that the enrollment options office would become the neighborhood schools office. I would also hope that we would direct, not ask, but direct every school, direct every school to work with the neighborhood schools office to promote, to all enrollment boundary residents, the, what that school has to offer to their local boundary residents. Not just students enrolled in our school, but all residents in the boundary. Let's try to let all families know, what does that local school offer? Because from what I've heard, and from some other comments of other fellow board members, a lot of parents really aren't informed about the amazing programs at their neighborhood school, and the fact that their neighborhood school is a California-performing school with an 800 or higher API. And that we also direct all schools to enclose a brochure, not optional, with their mandatory NCLB PI choice out notification letters. Since we have to mail something to almost every parent in the school district already, we need to direct and mandate that every local boundary school sends a brochure with that notice. As Mr. Barrera pointed out earlier this evening, good job. And that's, that's, those are the things that I, I point, I think we need to think about before we act.
Okay. So as far as this vote, and I think Mr. Barnett pointed out well, in terms of it's a general policy direction, some of the specifics need to be brought back to us, is how far as, how it would be implemented. Just to comment on Mr. Bizer's comment about the portable, is one of the things that happens sometimes, is that certain schools have increased their capacity by bringing on more portables on the campus, and therefore drawing students from other schools. And if they were not counting those, that some of them might actually stay in the neighborhood schools, and some of those portables could actually be moved back into the neighborhood if they were not counted. The, the class size issue has to do with, if we are under a budget crisis temporarily increasing class size, and therefore increasing the capacity of the school, the reason not to count that is because we, it's not our intention, if we ever have to increase class sizes, to stay there. We want to go back down, and we're not going to be putting people in and taking them back out when, when the class sizes go down. But I think all the other comments, I mean, I agree with, in terms of this very aggressive action to promote the neighborhood schools, and still maintaining, this does not cut off the option for people to choice. And just for definitions, we're talking about choice, we're not talking about magnet or VEP or anything else like that on this item. This is strictly the school choice item. So if there are no further comments, just to vote on that recommendation to the superintendent. Okay, that is 5-0.
I was just going to try to move us along, and move integration item, which-
Right.
Has a policy of the board, which says, district will continue to monitor diversity integration slash integration as attendance pattern shift, race human relations, we develop programs between racially isolated schools. As you all know, we eliminate, and I move that we approve this item.
Is there a second for that?
Yeah, I'll second, if I could just amend a little bit. I think we need to include economic factors as well as racial factors here when we talk about integration and diversity.
Racially and economically isolated schools.
Socioeconomically, yeah.
Socioeconomically.
Okay, I will include that.
Okay, so that's modified, moved and seconded. Any comments, or we can vote on that one?
Yeah, just real quick, on that, it would be very interesting to see some analysis over the past several decades about, are we getting more or less segregated as, as a district? So it'd be good to see.
And I would just to make a comment, too. I think there's a lot of things that could be done. We currently do have some racially isolated schools, and we may shift around and still have some. And that's why we had some originally, the OSAL programs and so forth, but that might be even on a smaller scale, something to consider with the racially isolated schools, how do we get them to interact more with each other? I think that's why, the idea of having them work on this program. Okay, let's vote on that one. On the integration item. Okay, that's 5-0.
Could I make a motion? And I'm not supporting the motion as recommended by the superintendent on specialty programs at this point. I would like a more detailed, and now move, or that we have a more detailed analysis of the funding delta for all the specialty schools and programs beyond, if you will, non-atypical schools, and get that. And that includes, you know, if there's four principals, there's costs there, if there's, and all the factors. So we can truly understand the costs when we make these decisions. So I would recommend not move the action of the cutting at this point, but just have a real drill down on all those factors.
Detailed financial analysis of specialty programs.
Yeah, and I'd agree with that, because one of the things that is a little bit troubling to me about the way that this is worded, sorry, second, not to move it, second to get more detailed.
I second his motion.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, second.
Is there's a, we're making a distinction here between specialty programs and neighborhood schools. Well, it could very well be that some neighborhood schools, and I, you know, I see the McKinley and Jefferson, basically the IB schools here, Roosevelt, Arturo was up there, schools that are increasing neighborhood enrollment because of the specialty program.
Right.
So, you know, I think part of this has to be an analysis of, you know, what are the programs that are actually, you know, increasing neighborhood enrollment that are, that are important in, in sort of marketing the neighborhood school to the community? And I don't think we want to make those resources necessarily subject to outside funding. I think those might be core to, to our strategy.
So Mr. Barnett is not here, but might be amended to the more detailed analysis of specialty, financial analysis of specialty programs, as well as academic results analysis?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So let's vote on that one, then? Okay, got that all down? Ms. Hudson, everything we said? Okay, it's on tape.
I'm going to, I'm going to say transportation.
School consolidation, I can support.
You're going to what?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
For school consolidation?
Oh, school consolidation, ma'am.
I can support that the realignment committee is going to bring forth periodic recommendations to improve schools. And if I can, with that, I'll pass this down. And what I'm passing down is a map of the district that shows where our charter schools are. And I think it's important that we're constantly looking how we can make our schools better. One of the emails, what I should say, with the group I'm getting now from emails, is from, as you can see by our map, I'm sorry, I don't have this for the public, most of the current charter schools are located south of the eight. And I'm getting a few emails from the schools in the southern part of the district saying they need support to make their schools attractive, because the charters are making their schools very attractive, they're being very aggressive. So with them taking that initiative, they're struggling to maintain their enrollment. And if you look at the numbers right now, over the last five years, we lose 462 students a year to charters. And so, and so, but what these schools are saying is that, as we're looking at specialty programs, magnets, and those types of things, how do they, how do we make our schools, the public schools, more attractive? Because in some cases, our hands are tied. And right now, Valencia Park is sitting there saying, and yes, as O-Punk may have said, we've lost some of our professional staff for our arts. Right down the street in Valencia Park is O'Farrell, who is standing up their arts program. So you find the people leaving Valencia Park going down to O'Farrell. And O'Farrell, because it's a magnet, because it is a charter, is opening more of those types of programs to pull the students away. But because of our budget, we are sometimes cutting the staff that are doing that, so the school looks less attractive to the community. So I would say part of this school consolidation, that we're always looking to see, how can we make our schools more attractive and more competitive?
Is there a second to Ms. Jackson's motion on school consolidation? Okay, seconded. Any comments? I just want to agree with, with what she said. I think this is very important. We were looking at this in, under a budget axe, and, which was not a very healthy way to be evaluating these issues, but, but we, at the same time, don't want to drop it. And, and in terms of the school size, I mean, we talked about some schools being too, too small, and there may also be some other schools that are too large sometimes. And so this is just continually finding the right, the right equilibrium on that. And again, I think what Ms. Jackson was saying, too, the point being, is there a way, in some instances, to combine two schools to actually make a better school, to make a better, a better neighborhood school, so you have a better product overall? Any other comments? Then let's vote on the school consolidation item.
Did you act on facilities? I missed, I missed that.
Facilities we haven't acted on.
So we're voting to continue the School Consolidation and Realignment Committee as is?
Yes.
With no board-appointed representation on the committee?
Well, I can support that. I mean, I heard what you said at the last meeting, and so certainly, I don't have a problem with-
And I found out which schools were on the closure list from the Union Tribune. I mean, I polled the board and say, raise your hand if you found out which schools in your area are on the close hit list from the Union Tribune, but then I, I didn't want to put anybody else on the spot up here.
And we don't want to, you know, advertise the Union Tribune.
I was out of town. It didn't seem fair.
No, but if you want, I, I'm willing to- I mean, you know, we have no parents on the realignment committee that I know of. I mean, we have no community members, we have no teachers, no board-appointed representation on the realignment committee.
On my understanding was, and just to make this comment, would be, the model that I'm thinking of is along the lines of the North Park closure item, which was the staff talked to the school and found out what was needed there and what could be done, and engaged with the local community. I'm not expecting a committee, again, to come up with a list and say, here are two or three schools to be closed. I would expect that if they saw an opportunity for a consolidation, that they would not, district-wide, have representation, but they would go discuss with that community if they're interested in consolidating a couple of schools, and if that community is interested and supportive of it, as it was in the North Park case, which was a difficult one, they would come forward to the board and, and present that. So that would be the, it's not like the previous ones where we're going to have a district-wide committee pointing fingers at which schools are going to be closed. committee pointing fingers at which schools are going to be closed. I mean, that's my understanding of what.
My understanding is to continue the work of the school consolidation and realignment committee to keep going on the current act. And I don't, I can't support that. Because I think we need to, I mean, I, do I support the idea of the committee? Absolutely. Do I think that the committee should have, should be kind of augmented? Yeah, because it's my understanding that the criteria that that committee was given by the board wasn't followed as well as it could be. Instead, what happened, as if I remember correctly, is they developed some point system so that they could take, there were no absolute criteria. So there were 900 API schools on the close list, and I thought that we had said, we're not going to close any high performing schools at all. And then what I heard from members of the committee was, well, it wasn't an absolute criteria, it was more a point system. And I don't know what the point allocations were. So I think that we need to, that we need to look at, how can we make this kind of a group committee more effective in the future?
Before, before we move to a decision, let me ask Phil if he wouldn't mind commenting on makeup of the group, focus of the group, and just the general process.
Mr. President, can I just suggest, I, I think Mr. Bizer raises a lot of good questions, but we're getting a little off subject, even though this is, why don't we, number one, the board made a motion recently that school closure and consolidation would be based only on academic, improving academic performance, not economic fiscal matters. Whether we agree or not, that's what the board did. Secondly, if there are, maybe we should put on the agenda just a discussion of what the school consolidation committee will be doing in the future, what work, and then whether we want to expand it, add it, and so we can give clear, if we want to change the direction, expand it. I'm not opposed to what you're saying, I just think instead of getting to that detailed discussion now, let's make sure we have a separate board item agenda on a future agenda.
The way that I read this is, is to, I understand how Mr. Bizer read it also, but was just to continue to explore realignments and consolidations, and I understand not necessarily in the way that we were before. But Mr. Stone, you have just a comment.
Yeah, as I saw this, my, my thinking was that, and what we've already started to do as a committee, is modeled on the five recommendations that the board approved as opposed to the 14 previous ones, where, where it was for the purpose of strengthening learning opportunities or facilities for the students. And we did engage with every cluster and only brought forward those recommendations that were approved by the individual cluster. So the five that you actually approved were done, each one of those was done with the concurrence of the cluster as a whole, that they would support the recommendation.
All right, so we can get into the details more than just Mr. Barnett pointed out.
So we're just going to add this to the future agenda and not take any action tonight, then? Is that the intention on this item? Was there even a motion?
I thought there was a motion.
We already voted.
There was a motion to.
Okay, well, then we will also agree, we're going to add this to a agenda, right? We're going to add this issue of the school consolidation committee to a future agenda, so the issues that Mr. Bizer and Ms. Jackson brought up.
But we're approving the school consolidation committee to continue its work in its current form without representation from board appointed people, without parents, without teachers, without staff.
Or kids.
And so. Or kids.
And so I think what Mr. Barnett is saying.
Right, dogs.
We can approve this, but we will ask the staff to bring this back, that committee, to improve the committee list.
Or look at.
If maybe in terms of simply for the wording, continue to bring for, just not even using the committee word here, because we can figure out how to do this, continue to, to bring forth periodic recommendations for consolidation and realignment.
Did I make the motion?
Yes, you do. And it's too, it's probably too late to.
If I can make a comment, that 96% of the people on the committee are parents. We all have kids.
Nice try.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, is the motion being, is the motion being withdrawn?
No, it's already been voted on. You can't just withdraw.
Okay.
It's voted up or down and then.
Okay, the vote, there we have it. Okay, it's four one. Okay, are there motions on any other items regarding?
On the transportation, what I would like to say, suggest is we had, we reduced transportation this year, and there were impacts, we didn't, and in some cases, the impacts maybe weren't what we predicted as far as, I think one school reduced transportation of buses, and now they have a traffic problem. So I guess what I'd like to suggest is since we have already passed a very general budget that calls for a two-year, $2 million cut next year and $2 million cut the following year, I'd like to ask staff to examine the impacts of this year's cuts and try to project as much as possible how future cuts would impact other schools based on current results. So we can at least make if, if we are, because going to continue this, we need to have a better idea of what the impact will be. So basically, I'm just asking for more data when, bring back in our budget discussions related to the impacts of these, as best as you can project them.
So your motion is to examine the effects of this year's transportation cuts and what the effects will be in future cuts, of future.
Try to project what the impacts would be under the current budgeted proposed phase out.
I would say that we need to do that and also consider what the state is perhaps driving to with this $9 million cut, which is another factor.
Well, that is a good point, because if we can only legally, we believe, cut $4 million, then we have to then raise it by $5 million. So, so just a more detailed analysis, not just as it relates to the choice and magnet program, but since we're already going in that direction, let's get a better understanding of what the impacts will be based on this year's real world impacts.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree, and there's a couple of issues in particular. One is, I do think we need to understand what the proposed budget cut and the governor's proposal means for our transportation. So when they say that they're going to cut funding for transportation and that has a potential $9 million impact on our budget, we're assuming that that's entirely a cut to our general fund unrestricted. If that's the case, have we been using all of that state money as, in a sense, general fund unrestricted? We just need to have a clearer sense of what that means. And then the other thing is, you know, as, as we do this analysis and come back with this data, I want to keep coming back to phasing out all specialty school Veep transportation might not be consistent with, number one, in the four options that we just talked about in terms of choice, that the choice option will be retained in San Diego Unified. And we have to continue to look at schools like SCPA, Language Academy, other schools with a high percentage of their students who are being bused. And if we discontinue busing, are we discontinuing that program? And if we're discontinuing that program, are we consistently, are we consistent with the idea that the choice option will be retained in San Diego Unified? So.
But that, so that comment is on the original language, not on Mr. Barnett's motion, right? Because his motion is just to examine the effect.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with that. Yeah, exactly, I'm just, yeah.
Pointing out that that's, that we are not, that's not what we are approving, what is written here.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's vote on that.
Could I ask for a restatement of the motion?
Sure.
I won't ask the clerk to do it. Unless the clerk wrote it down, I'd like to read it. Okay. I would like to ask the staff to review, number one, the proposed potential cut of the governor, $9 million, or dollar cut to transportation. And number two, the currently proposed cuts over the next two years in transportation, and using existing impact in this year's budget, try to project what these additional cuts will actually mean over the next two years to attendance at those schools that are being bused to. Is that kind of clear?
He's asking for more information.
Well, that would have been shorter.
More information. Okay, please vote on that one.
More information is always.
Okay, Mr. Barnett, voting your motion. Okay, five zero.
Mr. Barrera.
Okay. And then the only other item there, if someone was making a motion, facilities, it's just basically the transportation facilities have to be, you know, we're making changes to transportation, you have to coordinate it with, with changes to facilities, which seems pretty logical if somebody wants to make a motion on that item.
So moved.
Okay. No comments against logic? Please vote.
So just a couple of other points that aren't necessarily contained in what we've just gone over. So one is, and this might be under the sort of the development of the neighborhood schools office, I would like to see a timeline for the rolling out, we've talked in the past about the equivalent of a dashboard for, you know, being able to look at a school and the 12, you know, characteristics of a, of a strong neighborhood school. So kind of a rollout for, for when that tool is going to become available and how it's going to be used would be great. And then the, one of the issues that I think becomes a little bit interesting in this is when we talk about the boundaries of a neighborhood school, because as we look through this, this document, basically the, the, where the students who go to these different schools live, one of the things that, you know, is, is, that stands out is, in some cases, we've got schools where a lot of the students come from neighborhoods just outside of the specific boundary. And, you know, when I think about a, a community like City Heights or a community like, you know, North Park, South Park, Golden Hill, or many others, the boundaries of that specific school might be narrower than what a lot of people think of as the neighborhood or as, or as the community. So when we have this conversation about a neighborhood school, so for instance, Oak Park, you know, just looking at this, I mean, we've got, two thirds of the kids actually come from the resident boundaries, but a lot of the other kids come from, you know, adjacent neighborhoods. And so are those kids attending a neighborhood school? We might argue, yes, they are. So this, you know, sort of definition of neighborhood boundaries, yeah, we, we might want to look at in this whole analysis.
The other thing, do we have, I don't believe we included in here, people who come from out of the district to these schools in this data? Did we just, or was out of boundary meaning? So it might just be no to break that down to see which schools do that as well.
And I think, I would agree with Mr. Barrera, that we need to break down the data on the out of boundary students, because there are other cases, I know, for example, in Mira Mesa, there's, it's almost all neighborhood students, and yet there's a small percentage who are not, but it turns out that they are from the adjacent school, and they might be living almost halfway between them. And so we really don't want to count them as people outside the neighborhood when we're doing that, that calculation.
Yeah.
And the other thing, if, if Mr. Koba could just point out, because I think two or three of us this morning had a conversation with a person about this, in terms of the rollout of this, the whole strategic process, you know, we're talking today about these 12, 12 indicators, and that, just exactly how is that going to happen? So it's not just sitting there, but people know what is the process, because we understand the process is it's actually going to go to the schools and the communities, and there's going to be discussions about this.
Tomorrow, we are holding a principal forum at the Scripps Mesa Conference Center, and it will be an opportunity to walk our principals through the latest version of the strategic process in its draft form. They'll be broken out into small groups, facilitated to get feedback on the particular elements of the strategic process, then provide some guidance for the principals to go forward, to then have a discussion with their staffs and within the cluster framework, and then move that outreach out into the wider cluster with the parents and gather feedback to continue to refine the document. Now, the board has benefited from having a couple of updates. If you go back to last spring, late summer, and fall, we haven't gone out to campuses and clusters in that regard. And that kind of information has to be brought to bear. And then come back to the board again for, for a follow-on update. Today was the first time, I think it's a historical event, where we have paralleled the conceptual framework discussion with these kind of quantitative and substantive policies that now have to be accommodated as we go forward. So there's some parallel path work that's ongoing or will unfold here in the next couple of months.
And if you could just tell, make one comment about the all schools fair that's on January 28th, because this is very in line with what we're talking about. About all schools, neighborhood schools, magnet schools, choice schools, everyone has an opportunity to be at Balboa Park, and it's the first chance to promote themselves.
That's right. And this is a transition year. In the past, this has been a choice fair or forum where it was largely about emphasizing the options among the specialty schools that we discussed earlier in this presentation. Now we're trying to bring balance where all the clusters, all the neighborhood schools in the clusters, as well as all the option for schools, specialty schools, are available and ready to share information with parents and students. So we're just trying to reset and bring some new balance to what we're trying to do with neighborhood schools and with quality specialty schools as well.
Okay, so January 28th at Balboa Park, 10 a.m. This meeting is adjourned.